I would like to call the meeting to order of the Wareham School Committee. It is Thursday, April 25th. This meeting is being recorded by WCTV, broadcast by WCTV, and audio recorded by Jamie Wickston. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming this evening, and we're going to begin our meeting with a celebration of our veteran staff, and I'm going to turn the proceedings over to Dr. DeAndrea.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. My name is Matt DeAndrea. I'm Superintendent of Schools here in Wareham. I would like to start by saying congratulations to all of our staff who will be recognized this evening. We're going to begin with our staff members who have been with Wareham Public Schools for 20 years. Unfortunately, four of these individuals were unable to join us this evening. Lynn Peterson, Michelle Skolnick, Jessica Andrews, and Elizabeth Hood. Please give them a round of applause. All right, so first, I have the honor to speak about Dr. Bethany Chandler. Please come on up. Dr. Chandler began working in a district in 2004. At that time, the President of the United States was George W. Bush. That was a long time ago. And that year, the Patriots and Tom Brady won their third Super Bowl. Bethany started out as a fifth-grade classroom teacher at Deccus, has served as an assistant principal at the middle school, and is currently the principal of Wareham Elementary School. Over the past 20 years, Dr. Chandler has also served as a lead teacher, a mentor to our new teachers, and taught in our after-school and summer programs. She has served on multiple curriculum development committees. Most importantly, however, Dr. Chandler is a dedicated, compassionate, and intelligent building administrator. When you enter Wareham Elementary School, you can feel the positive energy as enthusiastic and happy students walk the hallways. When we visit classrooms together, Bethany knows all the students, and they are always happy to see her and to share something exciting that they are working on. Thank you, Bethany, for your 20 years of commitment to our students. Bethany, you've got to go. Okay, now Bethany will recognize Kathryn Harunk.
Okay, Kathy, come join me, please. Mrs. Harunk serves as a first-grade teacher at Wareham Elementary School. Like many of us, she has taught at Minnet, she's taught at Deccus, and here at Wareham Elementary, and Hammond as well. Kathy is well-known for her high standards of practice. All of her students know the high standards, and all of her parents know the high standards. Every day, that's what's expected of Kathy Harunk. Kathy's relentless in ensuring that every child gets the best education possible. She's a straight shooter, who is not afraid to tell families exactly how their child is performing. It is this bravery that allows for students to thrive. So much so, that each February, right around President's Day, this courageous teacher has all of her six-year-olds go onstage in front of over 100 parents and recite a fully memorized presidential speech. Each child pretending to be one of the 46 Presidents of the United States in... Full costumes. That's right. Wearing hats such as these. These are six-year-olds speaking without lines, not all of them not knowing how to read, yet they have memorized every single word. Why? Because when Ms. Harunk teaches, students learn. And when Ms. Harunk gives out a task, it is accomplished. And she makes sure of it. Congratulations to 20 years, Kathy. Barbara, you're up. Barbara Michelini. Barbara began her career at Wareham, actually at Wareham Middle School, in February 2004. She has been a dedicated employee for 20 years and has worked her way to lead custodian. Barbie is always willing to do whatever it takes so that our school environment is a beautiful building for students to grow and learn. She is also tremendously positive, regardless of what I ask her to do. She might question me and say, "Really?" And I'll be like, "Really, Barbie? Congratulations," and we so appreciate her.
Pamela Kristofolsky, please come on down. The Food Service Department is very proud of Pam Kristofolsky, who has been with us for 20 years. Pam now serves at Wareham High School, but she started out as a part-time worker at Minnet Forest Elementary, and over the years, has become a key member of our team in multiple roles in multiple schools. During regular school years, during several summers, and very much during COVID, Pam has been and is one of our top performers and has literally given her blood, sweat, and tears in service to our students, literally. She has also had numerous burns, cuts, sprains, and even a couple broken bones in the performance of her duties. But through it all, she has always been one of the most positive and upbeat members of our staff. She is truly valued by all who work with her, and we all happily congratulate her on making the 20-year milestone, and we look forward to being back here in the future for her 30-year recognition.
We will transition now to our staff who have been with the Wareham Public Schools for 30 years. Two of our 30-year staff members are also retirees, so we will speak about them in the retiree section of the program, and we'll also be going a little bit out of order. So first, I have the honor to speak about Mr. Scott Palladino. Come on up, Scott. Mr. Palladino began working in Wareham Public Schools in 1994. At that time, the President of the United States was Bill Clinton. The Patriots had not won any Super Bowls at that time, and Tom Brady was in high school. Scott started out as a teacher in the system. He has served as a housemaster, assistant principal, and of course, principal of the high school. In addition, Scott has coached football and track, served as our energy manager, and taught in the adult ed program, among many other things. Scott is an extraordinarily dedicated administrator. He is in attendance at virtually all after-school events, and at the high school, there are many. Scott works tirelessly to ensure the Wareham High School is a safe and welcoming environment. It is evident that he cares deeply about our students and believes strongly in our ability to have a positive impact on their lives. Thank you, Scott, for 30 years of service.
Nurse Sheila Braley. All right, Nurse Braley has been with us for 30 years. She serves each student with love and patience. Sorry, hugs and happiness, and Band-Aids galore. And she's a mean cook, too, especially with her scones. If anybody has had Sheila Braley's scones, you know what I'm talking about. She's always smiling, happy, and cheerful, until there is a serious medical episode. Right, Nurse Braley? These have been on me multiple times. And Nurse Braley, as kind as she is, will give you an ultimatum. We can do it this way, or we can do it that way. And working with Nurse Braley for many years, I can tell you, time and time again, she's told me how it's going to be, because she's always looking out for the best interest of not just the students and the staff, but all of our families. So we want to say thank you, Nurse Braley, and thank you for all you've done. It must be Mr. Paling's turn. Mr. Paling, come on down. Here he comes. It was 1980-something in the place where Rick Paling grew up in, Wareham, Massachusetts, a Viking. Here we are, wearing the Viking shirt. We have a few Vikings in the house tonight. Mr. Paling, 1985? Eighty-six, 1984, Wareham High School graduate. Mr. Paling served as in our local community for an outstanding 30 years. So I looked up, when I think of Rick, Phys Ed Department, what a Viking stands for, and I read Pirate Raider. I said, "Yeah, not really Rick," so I kept looking for definitions. And then I found Exploration, Trade, and Settlement. I said, "All right, I can go for that with Rick." He's explored a few career opportunities within Wareham. He's created curriculums for his power courses, the whole curriculum for the whole entire year. And he's definitely a settler, as I said, Wareham Viking. He's settled here, and he's made his career here in his hometown. But that's not all this Viking stands for, because there's two things I can think of. One is his bravery and his competitive nature, and two, father figure. I can see his boys here tonight. He's a father of three boys that came through Wareham, but he's a father to all of the students that have come through. And being one of the minority males, they look to him as dad as well. So, wait. I brought this just because. It's a new athletic equipment that Mr. Paling uses. It's an oxymoron, because he's certainly not a chicken. And I brought this because my last part of the story about him being a competitor, and a true competitor, is he came back from a PD on pickleball. Bloody knees, everywhere, blood everywhere, all over the classroom. Why? Because Rick Paling was going to win that pickleball tournament. And that's just what he represents in Wareham. He was going to take home the prize for Wareham, and he's a prize that Wareham has. So thank you, Rick, for your service. Still me? Here I am. All right, Patrick Roach, Mr. Roach, come on down. Here comes another Wareham Viking. It was 1980-something, 1985, in the class where Mr. Roach grew up in. I first met Patrick, being his substitute teacher, in the infamous Wareham John W. Deccus portable classrooms. Have you ever been to the portables? Yeah. Well, it was about the year 2000, and I sat, very green, very green to education, not even knowing what I was really doing. And I sat, I never really met Patrick, but here I was at his desk, and I was looking for the lesson plans, found them meticulously done, by the way, so I was so excited. But I looked around, and you know, you always check out and scope out the sequence of where, what you're doing. And this is what I remember. A sign on Patrick's side that it said, "Say yes to children as much as possible." And it stuck with me, and still does as a leader today. One of the quotes I will always remember is to say yes as much as possible. Now I'm going to go to my script of why. Because, wait, let me go. It's his love for children that made the most remarkable difference, never mind. But you need to say yes as much as possible to children. Patrick is, I can't even go on and on, but he has created such dynamic communities. He's had, he's hosted families with his Mother's Day teas. He's been out with staff to the Boston Red Sox. Wearing hats like this. And so all the children knew Mr. Roach, who he was, what he stood for, and why he said yes to so many children all the time.
I'd like to call up Charlie Dyer. Charlie is being recognized for 30 years of service to the Wareham High School. He is a special education teacher who is also certified in mathematics. It's very unusual to have someone like that in your building. Charlie has co-taught math classes, he's run small-group classes for many years. He is a senior member of a very large special education department at Wareham High School. Charlie has also coached soccer for many years and is currently the boys JV soccer coach. Charlie is always willing to do anything to support our students. It's not unusual for a senior to go back to Charlie after the school year has ended to bulk up on their portfolio in preparation for their exit interview. Charlie has been essential in designing portfolio assignments and assisting students with their EPPs. He personalizes his learning to include himself in various open-ended math questions, such as his famous Sundeck, which almost every student has measured throughout the years. He loves to tie in sports data into his math problems, most recently, Major League Baseball batting averages. We look forward to seeing the positive impact Charlie will have on our students over the next few years. Charlie, congratulations on 30 years of great service. I'd like to call up Lisa Omen. Lisa Omen is also being recognized for 30 years of service to Wareham High School. Lisa is our veteran foreign language teacher. She is a leader in the Spanish department and previously served as a department head. She is very organized and well-planned. She commands respect from our students and is always teaching them in the Spanish language. She is always willing to help students and other faculty members with whatever is needed. She is one of our building representatives for the union. She attends numerous events to support our students outside the classroom. It's not unusual to see Lisa at various sporting events, concerts, drama plays, chaperoning numerous dances, including homecoming every single year, and obviously involved with DECA in supporting our students in their fundraising events and competitions. She also serves as a mentor to new foreign language teachers and new teachers throughout the building. She does a very thorough job with this and has an excellent track record with the teachers she mentors. We look forward to seeing the positive impact Lisa has on our students for the next five years. Congratulations, Lisa Omen. Okay, the final group that we will recognize this evening is our retirees. We have several that were unable to make it this evening. I would like to say thank you to the following retirees. Michelle Laterno, Lee Marrero, Trish Panzoni, Christine Sylvester, Joanne Gibbs, Robin Murphy, Martha Schnorbus, Tony Thatcher, Eileen Frazier, and Ann Weiss. Thank you to these retirees for their service. Please give them a round of applause. Now I have the honor to speak about Joan Siemens. Joan, come on down. Joan Siemens has retired after 22 years in the district and 37 years in education. Joan started her career in Carver as a third-grade teacher in 1987. The President of the United States at the time was Ronald Reagan. Tom Brady was 10 years old. In 2002, Joan began her career in Wareham. She has served as principal of the Hammond Elementary School, East Wareham Elementary School, and Minnet Forest Elementary School. At one time, I believe, she was principal of all three at the same time. Joan was my principal when I was a teacher in the district, and I learned much from working for her. She has always been a model of professionalism and hard work, and she has an extraordinary attention to detail. However, Joan's number-one priority has always been the children of Wareham, and a commitment to providing our students with a safe and enriching place to learn and grow. Congratulations, Joan, and thank you for your service to our school community.
Miss Anne Marie Fillian. Miss Anne Marie Fillian began her work at Wareham as a special education teacher in 1987. She has served for the past 20 years in preschool, where she taught and worked as a leadership, in the leadership role. Anne Marie worked tirelessly to support preschool students testing, writing reports, observing, grouping, and of course, teaching. That is how much work Anne Marie Fillian did in preschool. Sometimes I thought there was a preschooler in there so she could test at home. Anne Marie is a remarkable, remarkable educator. She's a remarkable, remarkable friend. She has served preschool, not just the students, but those preschool staff, enjoying hosting many, many socials, creating concoctions with lemon to give away that we loved and adored, and even dressed as... Miss Claus, she was Miss Claus, and did a beautiful job with a beautiful, beautiful outlook. And we miss Anne Marie Fillian very, very much. Congratulations for your retirement. We miss you. Okay. Dory? I'm going to say Kais, but I'm going to work on this new last name of yours, Dory. Huddinger, Huddinger, Huddinger! Huddinger. Dory! Dory, I might go completely off-script for this one. So also, Dory. Dory is fun-loving, to say the least. So many of these staff members, just so fun-loving of bringing so much community and spirit to our school every day. I know Dr. DeAndrea spoke about the happiness, but the happiness comes from the staff that you see here tonight, including this member who is retiring. Take the skateboard out, Dory. There it is. Not every day do you see a teacher go down the hallway with a skateboard, skating, just to get to the copy machine faster. They all use the copy machine, but this member skateboards her way down. And every single day, this is the attitude Dory has come to school with. I talked about Mr. Roach's "Say yes as much as possible," but Dory's got a copyright at Wareham Elementary School, too. And it's something, as a school principal, I think about every day. When Dory and I have had conversations, she says to me, "These students, these kids..." What are they, Dory? She does, she gives me a lot of, a lot of advice. But she says, "They're our clientele. This is who we serve every day." And it reminds me, this is who we are here for every day. They are our clients. And that's the attitude that Dory comes in with. It's not about Dory. It's not about the pay. It's about the students that she served each and every day. And every day, you know what else she says to me? "I've got one more year in me." So, Dory, thank you. Thank you for your happiness, your positivity, the messages that you send to staff every day. It's been a real pleasure. Okay, and I, you know what we're looking for down the... Yes. Okay, Miss Nancy Newton, come on up. Hi, Nancy. You ready? Nancy has served as an amazing art teacher here in our district for 19 amazing years. She loves, loves Frida Callejo? Callejo? Calo? Frida Calo. Everybody, I don't know if you know who Frida is. She is the artist, from Mexico. She celebrates the Day of the Dead. She has the one eyebrow. And every year in October, we all celebrate this amazing artist. But what I'm going to say is Frida doesn't have a handle on this artist right here. Because of all of the artists that Nancy brings in, to all the talent, yes, they're artists. This is an artist. But she's also an amazing educator, friend, colleague, and she brings so much more to the table than any professional artist I have ever met. This year, snow globe. We created a live snow globe. I think you've seen it on Facebook. It was pretty epic. And we all jumped in, created by Nancy Newton. Right now, I know that we've got 35 days left of school, but that's not stopping Nancy Newton. No, we're going to make a chandelier for, right? We're making a plastic chandelier that's going to go into the Wareham Elementary School foyer with plastic and color, and it's a work in progress. Always the most creative and inspiring her students, and I just want to say, thank you, Nancy, for everything. Michelle Sampson. All right, Michelle. Michelle Sampson. 21 years of service at Wareham Public Schools, serving kindergarten, Hammond School, Deacon School, East School, Minnetonka School. We've been around, a lot of us. Dory is all at all the schools, too. We've been there. Amazing, amazing teacher. She's going to know what it is. I said a little bit about it last year when she had her 20 years. Michelle is on the clock all the time. School begins at 8:30, she's teaching. School ends at 2:50, she's teaching. These children may, they might have just 20 minutes of lunch a day. It's okay, because they are not going to miss out on a Michelle Sampson lesson. Time is of the essence. Time is of the essence for Michelle Sampson. And I don't know if she's got one of these in her classroom. I'm not sure. She has two. But the children's education come before any kind of schedule, and that's what we know about Michelle. So, in Michelle's retirement, I hope you don't use the clock anymore. Still, continue to do your yoga and all of the outdoor activities that you enjoy. And I heard you have a traveling trip coming up, and I'm so excited for you, Michelle. So, thank you for your dedication and service to our school. I'm not done yet. One more. All right. Karen Rittenauer. Karen has been with us for 30 years as a school psychologist. I'm finding her my 30. Here she is. Karen's going to be like... This is a new one for me. This is a ballet slipper, a small one, because Karen's a ballerina. And much like a ballerina, Karen performs in peace and quietness. She's calm and captivating and provides support, reason for students, families, staff, and she always is doing this with ballerina way, quietly, swiftly, and conscientiously, serving the needs of our school. I've always watched in awe as she was able to count, to have countless assessments, meet with countless students, go to countless IEP meetings, sometimes sharing them, and unwavering. She's also in charge of our summer program for extended year and has done it for many, many years. She ensures every child has exactly what they need. And again, I can't say it, she has done it with such grace for 30 years. So, Karen, thank you for your service. I think I'm done. Thank you all. Thank you, Wareham Elementary School, and all of you so much. I love working with every single one of you. All right. Sue Akins, come on up.
Sue Akins started at Wareham Middle School in January of 1996. She retired this February. Sue was always an experienced, calm, and knowledgeable nurse. She made so many connections with students and their families. Sue has always been my voice of reason with medical situations, and during COVID, she was always available, even as I cried with her on the phone at 10 o'clock at night because we were just exhausted when it was COVID. It was probably our 20th situation that we were dealing with, and Sue said, "Call me anytime, Tracy." She coined the phrase, "You have no fever, go back to class." I believe our students just wanted to see her and hear that phrase. Parents weren't always happy to hear it, but that's okay. It kept our children in class, and that's what Sue and I wanted. Sue knew kids and always had their best interests at heart. We miss her so much, and it's only been since February. Congratulations on your retirement.
Elaine Johnson, come on down.
Elaine Johnson started in Wareham in 1997 and at Wareham Middle School in 2014. Elaine retired in December of 2023, and boy, have I been lost without her. It's been a long couple of months. We didn't replace her either. So, for many years, Elaine trained me on what I needed to do. I was a new principal, and I would not have survived without her guidance. My desk is surely a sign of not having Elaine around anymore. People come in and they're like, "Oh, you're all right, Tracy?" No, I'm really not. She was always willing to do whatever was needed in order to support our school and ensure our students had what they needed. Elaine always strived to do her best, and she achieved that, and was always a five-star employee that excelled in her performance in all areas. No one will ever fill Elaine's shoes. Congratulations. Grant thinks it's very exciting, too. All right, Marilyn Hackett, come on down.
Hi. Haven't seen you in a while. Marilyn Hackett officially began her career in Wareham in January of 1994. For 30 years, she has worked tirelessly to support the staff, students, and families in Wareham. She has built such strong relationships with families and her colleagues over the years. She is always calm and cool. I'm not, so I need someone like Marilyn during any crisis situation, and we have had a lot of those at Wareham Middle School, especially in the last 30 years. Marilyn has volunteered so many hours after school on the weekends. I remember our old Renaissance program for dances, for carnivals, not because it was her job, but because she was part of what makes Wareham Middle School a wonderful place to learn and work. Marilyn is retiring at the end of June. No nurse, no secretary. I don't know. Don't expect much out of me. I am so happy for her to be able to spend time with her family and so sad for us, especially me. No one will ever be able to replace Marilyn, so see the pattern here? We're in trouble. I've been at Wareham Middle School for 29 years, so this hits home, all of these retirements. Not sure why I'm not retiring. Working at the middle school is not just working. It is working with friends who have become family. That is why all of these retirements are so difficult. Tonight, you see how very important each staff member is to the overall success of our building and why working at Wareham Middle School, Wareham in general, is such a wonderful place to work.
I'd like to call up Thomas Johnston. Tom came to Wareham High School when the eighth graders were placed at WHS in 2018. I was very excited when I saw Tom's name on the board of being transferred because I knew he was so well-respected by the middle school staff and administration. Tom is the most easygoing teacher, who nevertheless is one of the best in classroom management. Above all, Tom commands respect because he himself is so respectful of everyone else. You will never hear Tom raise his voice, but he has a way of calming and presiding over the eighth-grade classroom that is unmatched. His instruction is highly relevant to the concerns and interests of the students in his class, and he always finds a way to make the connection with history that they are studying and the major issues of that day. He promotes personal activism of students by showing them that social change is up to them and up to them to make happen. In fact, his civics project asks the students to advocate and promote social improvement initiatives that they believe are important. Additionally, Tom has brightened up the humanities wing, not only with his charming personality, but with his curation of plants that decorate our front stairwell and two calm-inducing fish tanks in his classroom. I want to leave you with a funny story. On the first day, you all know how crazy it is, and Tom leans over to me and goes, "You just made your faculty basketball team a heck of a lot better." And for those of you that may remember, we used to have a healthy competition between the high school faculty and the middle school faculty, and he would burn us every year with his outside shooting. I was disappointed to hear that Tom was going to be retiring, but I respect his decision. He's been a tremendous asset to Wareham High School since the eighth graders came over, and we will truly miss his presence at Wareham High School. I want to congratulate Tom. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our ceremony. Can we please give our recipients one more round of applause saying thank you? Thank you all for attending. There are some wonderful treats over there, some delicious, delicious cookies and water. Please take some on your way out, or you're welcome to stay for the school committee meeting and enjoy cookies. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
How are you doing?
Good.
Good. Good. So, you must have chosen your, have you chosen your college yet?
I'm close to the decision.
You're close? So, what are you thinking?
I think it's going to be UMass next.
Okay. A few of my friends went there. What's your, what are your other...
There's a school in New York that I'm considering and a school in Maryland.
Yeah, yeah. Deciding whether to stay close or go further away. UMass is, it's close, but not so close, too. Do you know what you want to study?
I want to study international relations. I might go there and then try to transfer.
Oh, it's good. Exciting.
Dressed up enough.
Yeah. Nobody stays the same.
Renal school.
Roach did the best child play sports. Maddie Keats, Phil and Maddie Keats' buddies.
See, I just hang out, right? This is like my time. Your last season's here, you can run.
All right, if you guys don't leave, you have to. Let's go to the school committee meeting.
All right, if you guys don't leave, you have to, so we can go to the school committee meeting.
Thank you. It sounds a little bit like a Sunday motion.
They're pretty.
Yeah, so I didn't do her, I didn't do her high school. I don't do that. They bet their kids and they cry. Why are you crying? I don't know.
Hey, you don't have the fever, go to school. Sue, you have plenty of time to play tennis now.
Yes, I do. My girlfriend and I, we were gonna say I did it. Bye. Bye.
Bye, thank you.
Do you have to be an employee to be an assistant coach?
Scott, that bag is some of your staff members. Thank you so much.
Okay, we will continue with our regular meeting. We now have public participation. Seeing no members of the public left behind, we will move on to good news. Would anyone on the committee like to share good news? Besides the good news we just experienced.
Yeah, that was a lot of good news.
All right, we'll move on to the student representative report.
Okay, thank you. So as usual, I will be starting off with the clubs and the activities that the students have been participating in. So, the newspaper is getting ready to produce their next edition. The AV Club has just produced their morning show, which they have been working diligently on. Select DECA students are getting ready to leave tomorrow for their International Career Development Concert, uh, Conference, my bad. And the Art Club is hosting their art show on May eighth and would love anyone of the public to attend. On April thirtieth, Student Council will be meeting to nominate the 2024-2025 new Student Council Officers and School Committee Representative. And on to the music part of this. The Jazz Band and Jazz Workshop has started up some of their new songs that they will be performing at their upcoming concert and would like the public to know that some of the songs that they will be doing are songs such as "Skydive," "Dolphin Street," "All Blues" and "Blue Bossa," a Bossa Nova classic that they are excited to be working on. And lastly, on a more academic side, IB exams are starting tomorrow with IB Global Politics, and students are preparing for that, and AP exams are starting up. So that is all that I have.
Thank you, Giselle Brennan.
Where is the DECA National Conference, okay?
It's in California.
How many students are going, do you know?
I don't know. I would say I, from my estimate, I believe it's five to like fifteen.
We're hearing nine, Mr. Palladino.
There you go.
That's good to hear, very good to hear.
Have you, have you ever taken an IB and an AP exam?
I have.
Well, how would you characterize the differences?
Well, I personally feel like the IB exam, there was more room to talk about topics that I personally was invested in, so there was more creative space. And I felt like they were questioning more on like, trying to see how we were thinking compared to IB, AP tests, which were more content-based and more, um, do you have a certain structure memorized and how well are you going to implement that structure?
Thank you.
The questions for Giselle. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the Director of Finance Report, so Kristin.
Good evening. In your packet you have the March report, so our year-to-date budget as of March 31st. We're winding down the fiscal year, so we're just checking the budget, reviewing the budget with all of our principals and directors and seeing where we're at if we need to make any adjustments. So that's what we've been hard at work doing. We're, we're on track, as I've mentioned throughout the year. We do have some, some areas that we have some funds in that you'll see coming up in the transfer that we would like to transfer into other accounts. And so if there's any questions on the year-to-date budget, I can take them, otherwise I can go through the, the transfer.
Any questions? Jeff?
So which broad account do you think you misjudged to the negative? And which broad account do you miss, do you think you misjudged to the positive in terms of spending? What surprised you in either direction, in both directions?
Well, probably in the negative would be out-of-district transportation. And that's not surprising because that's very unpredictable, and especially this year. And also in the positive, out-of-district tuition and some salary accounts to that extent, too. So you've seen that in, in the transfers throughout the year. The out-of-district transportation and the out-of-district tuition has been, there's been so much movement this year. In the tuition, we probably have a dozen students whose placements have changed, have ended. We've had students coming in and out, and that's not surprising, that happens every year. But this year we have had more students, and it's resulted in the out-of-district tuition account in having some, some surpluses in some areas because we have students that have been waiting to be placed for various reasons or left the placement, so it's, it's very unpredictable. We do the best that we can at budget time, and remember that we're doing that in September and October, November, to predict for the following, you know, twelve to eighteen months. And so all we can do is go with the students, the students and their placements that we know of, and we know that those can and do change, so we do the best we can with that. Out-of-district transportation, you know, that is a factor of whether the students are in placements or not, so there's some movement there. But then also this year, what's been exceedingly challenging is the vendor transportation, the transportation that we ourselves cannot provide due to capacity. However, I'm hopeful that our new vans will help out with that to some, to some extent next year. But, you know, as we've discussed, we have a lot of students in foster placements, in some of the emergency shelters that are, are coming and going. And so we've spent a lot of time between transportation, the Student Services Office, the Business Office, the bookkeeper in the Business Office that, that manages all of the transportation bills, just making sure that we are on top of all of the students coming and going. It's been, it's been quite, it's been quite an undertaking. We're hopeful now that we can include transportation in Circuit Breaker, so that helps us out a lot.
You say hopeful?
No, we're, we're hopeful because we can include it in Circuit Breaker. So that helps out a lot. And we also know that we will receive some reimbursement, we don't know how much or when or how it will come out to the schools for the, the shelter transportation. So we just filed for that, and it's going to be like the reimbursement for the students in the shelters based on three data collections, so we'll have, we'll have that as well. But we don't know yet how that's coming to us or how much, so that'll be helpful. It's, it's just that we have to come up with the funds in ahead of time and then get reimbursed. So a few months ago, we were looking to transfer into out-of-district transportation because we had all of these students coming on that we needed to be able to pay the bills for. Well, now we, we're, became aware that one of our most costly ones, it was a run to Boston Public Schools, we just found out that that student stopped, moved out of Wareham only because we weren't finding, we weren't receiving any information, and we finally contacted Boston and that we were told that the student stopped in January. So had we known that, we would have, we wouldn't have done some of the transfers that we did. So it's a lot of just keeping on track of everything. So, long story short, the most challenging is definitely transportation and, and out-of-district tuition. And I did mention payroll, and that's also, sometimes it's not a challenge, it shouldn't be a challenge because you know your staff and you're able to budget for them. However, again, it is twelve to eighteen months out when we're budgeting. And as we saw tonight, we've had a lot of retirements and those, and we've had a lot of, not a lot, but we've had some resignations, so we've had positions not filled, positions filled at a lower salary, positions filled at a higher salary in some cases. So you really have to be on top of all of that, so that, too, is a challenge.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I do have a transfer for tonight, and it's, you know, along the lines of, of what I discussed. The first one is, I tried to group them, and the first one is to reclassify Circuit Breaker expenses to the local budget to some extent. So when we have our out-of-district tuitions, we start in the summertime when we have the contracts and we decide where we're going to pay these tuitions from, whether it's the local budget, Circuit Breaker, or our special education grant. So we look at that and we just, we just kind of figure out what the buckets we put those in. At the start of the year, you're always concerned about your local school budget because that begins and then it ends on June 30th, and you have to, you know, make sure that you don't end in the negative, obviously. So we try to, we relied more on Circuit Breaker at the start of the year. However, as the year went on, we came to realize that we had, as I said, those twelve students or so, and some of them were leaving placements in December, November. Some of the placements were upwards of $100,000, so you can imagine, you can understand that. There's some unspent funds. So what this budget transfer is, is purporting to do is to take some of the, those early expenditures and some of the expenditures that we have coming up, that we had scheduled for Circuit Breaker, to pay them out of the local budget. We know in, in the year to come, because we've had some students leave and we are, we have lesser expenditures, that we're not going to get as big a reimbursement. So this transfer here is an effort to reclassify the expenses to the local budget to keep the Circuit Breaker funds intact for next year when we know that we will need them. So that's the first one. The second one is looking at, again, I mentioned, we're starting to look at our account budget lines more closely for year-end and predicting where we're going to land. We know that we will, we, we will need funds in our transportation supplies line in regular transportation and special ed. We have three more months of fuel that has to be charged, and we also have some, some, some parts that we need to, to continue to purchase. I spoke with our Transportation Director today, and she's mentioned this throughout the year and even warned me about it last year, that, you know, we had a lot of buses, twenty or so buses in, in the yard that weren't on the road, but that we were still using for parts for our buses. Well, those twenty buses went to auction in October, so we don't have our, our graveyard, our boneyard, so to speak, anymore, so now we've, we're seeing that in our, our supply expenditures. So that's the reason for that. The next group is to reclassify some paraprofessional salaries. A year ago, when we made the budget, a year and a half ago, we had a position at, that we had scheduled to pay out of the 240 grant, that's a special education grant. So it wasn't included in the budget, it was going to be paid out of the 240 grant. Now, federal grant rules say that any salaries that you pay, you have to also use nine percent of that salary and pay the retirement. So it's a better idea not to charge salaries to a federal grant because you get to keep the money, you know, to use it in your schools. So if you had, just to make the math easy, if you had a $100,000 salary, we're going to pay, you know, $9,000 in, for the retirement. That's money that we could have spent on something else within our schools. So the Student Services Director and I, when, when we applied for the grant, several months later, over the, over the summer, decided to start moving salaries out of the grant in an effort to preserve the grant funds. So that's what you see here. So now that, that salary has been charged to the local budget all year long, and it's, we need to do a transfer. So the accounts that I'm looking at are ones that either someone had left and the position had been filled at a lower level, or the position has been vacant, so we know we won't need those funds. And finally, the last group is just to transfer money from the middle school utilities account to the middle school heating account. So we found we need more in, in heat than we do in electric at the middle school. So those are the transfers that I have for your consideration tonight.
Any questions about any of those transfers for Kristin?
No, because you did such a good job of explaining, thank you.
We have a motion to approve, and second, all in favors?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. In your packet was Superintendent's Newsletter, and listed in the newsletter is a gift that we have received, $1,000 donation to our care and sale program, after-school programs, to support transportation costs. That came from Smithers Laboratories, which are located right here in Wareham. They've been supportive in other ways, too, and I'm very appreciative of their donation, and I ask that you accept it.
So move.
Second.
Well, thank you to Smithers, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you, and also in the Superintendent's Newsletter is the, are the payroll and Bill Warrens, and I ask you to approve those.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you, and that's all I have for the evening.
That's what you think. Move on to the School Committee Report and Policy Reviews. April, floor is yours.
Thank you. So the Policy Review Committee had our final meeting of the, of the year, and we just have three policies for us to go through and vote. The first policy is the social networking policy. So we actually are looking to suspend or replace this current social networking for staff policy with the personal use of technology policy. This was a recommendation from MASC, and it is in the packet, hopefully anyone reviewed it. If you have any questions, I'd take a motion, unless you have any questions, I'll take a motion to approve this policy. Joyce?
I have a question. At the end of the new policy, it says, it cross-references four, one, two, three, four, five policies, but I don't believe we have those policies. If we do, they're not called the same, they don't have the same title.
Right, right.
So if we have a policy that's similar, I, all I did was look it up by the title of the policy. So for instance, Staff Conduct, we don't have a policy that says Staff Conduct.
Right, we don't, we don't. So the cross-references, I do not believe that means we, we must have those cross-reference policies, but there would be policies that this could overlap with, that you might want to look into that policy and perhaps adopting it, but it is not something that you absolutely have to have if you're going to adopt this policy. I, I, I actually wish I had the exact language for you, Joyce, because I looked that up, I looked up that myself because I was, I wondered that, and the mask has that on their website, and it's just kind of like a, a policy in which it might overlap with.
Okay, could we just add that to this, like in parentheses? Whatever the language is.
Like may not apply.
Wareham does not have these policies, but they exist on mask.
Sure.
Not that, those words, but that, whatever that would say. Not that, those words, but that, whatever that would say.
So like, you know, in parentheses, may not apply? You know, or cross-references listed may not apply to Wareham policy? Or current Wareham policies?
I'll leave the wording up to Dr. Dandrea.
Yeah, I'll work on something and we can, we can wordsmith it.
Okay. So do we?
So just to be clear, what we're talking about is where it says cross-references, we're talking about putting our own policies that may have applicability to this policy? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's an excellent suggestion. I'm not sure it's really necessary to bring it back to the committee. I'll leave that up to the chair. But I think, I agree with Joyce that that's, that's totally appropriate.
Well, that's actually not how I just understood the answer. I, the way I understood what Dr. Dandrea said is that these specific policies exist, they're mask policies that Wareham has not adopted.
Exactly.
But Wareham doesn't, does Wareham have a policy that addresses access to digital resources?
We have to what? We do have a digital use policy.
So will we put that policy on here, or will we put more of just a disclaimer on here?
I think it's possible that we could do both. I think that we could, if there's ones that we have currently as a policy, make sure that the title and the name do align. But anything that's not currently a policy, we can put that caveat that, you know, some policies listed are based on MASC's recommendations, not necessarily policies that Wareham Public Schools currently holds.
What if we just eliminated all the cross-references?
Yeah, I was about to say.
We could do that too.
Nothing that requires this to be there at all.
Right, we can just remove it.
Just remove that, and then we're not cross-referencing anything.
And then put those policies on the list of policies to look at first thing next year.
For consideration.
Yeah, for the following year.
Right.
That's the simplest solution.
So do we have a motion to accept this policy without the cross-reference section?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? 5-0-0. Thank you.
Okay. So the next policy was the discrimination harassment policy. Sorry, let me just pull it out. I will find it. Oh, wait. No, oh yes, okay. Sorry, I was completely out of order. The only change to this policy was in the, in the opening title referring to Title IX, I believe. And that was the only change or update that was discussed and voted on by the policy review committee.
So we added Title IX?
Yep, to the title. So it says discriminatory harassment dash Title IX. So if no one has any questions about that one, we can accept that as amended.
Just as a side note, for the first year since I've been coaching, all the students had to sign something. Sorry. For the first year that I've been coaching, all the students had to sign something saying they acknowledged that discrimination and harassment were inappropriate or what, against school policy, et cetera. Does anybody have any reason why this was the first year that we had to do that for our individual athletes?
Football had done it previously.
Tennis had never done it before.
Yeah, when Dylan was playing, Dylan had to sign it every year for football and for track.
That's, that's really interesting. Okay. They were happy to do it.
So do I have a motion on this policy?
Yeah, so moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? 5-0-0.
Okay. And the final policy was the restraint of student policy. And there was a change to this policy where we struck the statement, "All physical restraints that result in injury must be reported to DESI" and replaced it with, "When a physical, when physical restraint has resulted in an injury to a student or a program staff member, the program shall send a copy of the written report required by 603 CMR 46-064 to the department, postmarked no later than three school working days to DESI, TFM administration of the restraint." So it just made the language a lot more specific and put a timeline on that.
The only, only problem I have, and this is mine, is it refers to the department in capital letters. What department is that?
I believe that falls under the Department of Student Services.
DESI.
If it's DESI, then we should replace department with DESI because that's, that's what's referred to in the opening paragraph and says to be referred to as DESI thereafter.
Sure. We can do that, just to be more, more specific.
Yeah, because department doesn't really mean anything, but DESI does.
So it would read to remove the, and report to DESI, postmarked no later than three school working days to the DESI TFM administration of the restraint.
Fine.
Okay.
So moved.
So a motion to accept that with that DESI added?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? 5-0-0.
And I do want to again thank all of the members of the policy review committee meeting this year. We had some really good discussions and a lot of very, I had good attendance at almost all of them. So I do greatly appreciate everyone's time and consideration who were on the committee this year. So I thank them again.
Could I just ask one more question about policies before? So on the social networking for staff policy, it says that it will be suspended and replaced with the personnel use of technology, which we voted on, and the district website and social media policy, which was in our packet, but we didn't vote on that one. Or did we? Did we vote on the two together?
I thought we were voting on the two, but I could have misunderstood.
I'm on voting on suspending.
So we suspended, and then there's two new policies.
I only saw the personal use in my packet.
Yep, so there.
Did I miss?
District website and social media.
I had the, the one we suspended, but I don't have.
Do you have district website and social?
I do not have that.
Oh, I do.
Oh, wait. I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
I, I sure do.
All right.
I'm so sorry. So yeah, so I guess we have one more to vote on, which is the other MASC recommendation about the district website and social media. And again, this would be just adopting this policy on the recommendation of MASC, and it is one that we currently do not have. So we, again, this would go into replacing the current social networking that we have voted to suspend and adopting this new policy as well.
Do we have the same issue with cross-referencing at the bottom, or not really?
I wasn't going to bring that up.
I believe the only one that's not is the use of electronic messaging by school committee members. But I do believe we have a policy about public comment on school committee meetings and the personnel list of technology that we just voted in. So those two are current. I don't believe we have the use of electron, if I'm not mistaken. Am I wrong?
I don't, I do not believe we have that as a policy.
Yeah, so the, so two of the, the policies listed, we do currently have one that we just voted on, and one of them we do not. But that's not to say that policy review next year won't have that on their list.
Meantime, we can delete it from the cross-reference.
Did you have any question?
Yeah. This is, this is a constant problem for most organizations. And that is in the very last line, it says, "A high priority will be placed on such platforms being quote accessible," great, "frequently updated, and user-friendly." This frequently updated thing, you know, wow. Who is assigned to update our website?
Wasn't that Robin?
Robin has sole responsibility to keep that entire website up to date.
I believe each page, like landing page, is updated by that individual school or department, but she oversees, I believe, the entirety of.
She is my deepest sympathizer. Wow. Is it working?
Yeah, it is working. It is working. She does a nice job.
I'm not saying she doesn't. I'm sympathetic to her, that she's not getting the information to, to, in fact, update it on a timely basis. You think she is?
Yes.
Okay?
Especially with information in which is, is very important for families to.
And who at this, I'm probably beating a dead horse, but who at the schools is feeding Robin the information?
I believe the principals, the secretaries.
Principals and secretaries to Robin.
Okay.
One other thing, where it says XX Public Schools, we will replace that with Wareham, in case anyone else didn't notice that as well. Because again, it is a blanket policy that we got from MASC. So we do need to update it with our own school district.
So we have a motion to accept with Wareham instead of XX, and we'll take out cross-referencing BHE.
Correct.
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? 5-0-0.
Thank you. I'm done.
So at this point, the superintendent has asked me to make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, I can't second that. So at this point of the meeting, on the agenda, we have the superintendent's evaluation. And just reading from our current evaluation policy, "It shall be the responsibility of the school committee to evaluate the job performance of the superintendent of schools. The individual committee member evaluations will be submitted to the committee chairperson for review and synthesis. From this information submitted by each committee member, the chairperson will prepare a final report, which will be included in the personnel file of the superintendent, and will be the consideration for any salary adjustment." It's this final report that we will review tonight, and we will have a vote at the end on the actual evaluation. So I want to thank the evaluation subcommittee, Jeff and Joyce, for all their work throughout the year, which began last summer, really, as part of the five-step evaluation process for the superintendent. The final composite evaluation, which is the only evaluation that, that counts, is made up of me trying to get a preponderance of evidence from all members. The good news is that we were almost in unanimity on all our ratings. And that we had strong consensus on nearly every indicator and performance rating. So there really isn't too much debate on that. We all scored relatively the same. What I'm going to do tonight is go through what those scores were. I will then read the overall summary, the composite summary. Every member here has given an individual evaluation, and I want them to feel free, please feel free to comment on your individual evaluation as we make public comments to the superintendent about his evaluation, which is, by the way, the only evaluation done in public for a public figure. So what I will do first is go through the actual evaluation itself and say how we rated the superintendent. So to begin with, the superintendent has a professional practice goal that he submits. And his this year was to create focus indicators for the teaching staff in Wareham to help streamline the evaluation process. We all ranked the superintendent as having met that goal. So he received the final ranking of met for that. The student learning goal was to do a district analysis of the strengths and weaknesses in the district, and then the plans to address them. We all said that the superintendent had made significant progress on this goal. It's not completed yet, but we are well on our way to meet that student learning goal. And then there were three district improvement goals. The first district improvement goal was to do a time analysis of the special ed staff to see how much of the time was spent in meetings versus in front of their actual students. And we all agreed, again, the consensus was that the superintendent met this goal. The second district improvement goal was to revise, create and revise the grade level ELA expectations for all grades. Once again, we scored the superintendent as having met this goal. And then the final goal, the district improvement goal, was analysis of school climate data and to look at potentially school improvement goals and plans to address that. This was where we had maybe our one split, I guess, where we didn't have four or five people on it. It was three to two in favor of ratings of significant progress on this particular goal. So the preponderance of votes there was for significant progress, which is how I indicated that on the composite. The second part of the superintendent's evaluation is based on four areas of, four standards. So instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And again, we had consensus, unanimity on all of those goals. So instructional leadership, we said the superintendent was proficient. Management and operations, I would say he got a strong proficient, but proficient still. Family and community engagement, again, proficient was the overall. And professional culture was also proficient. So that's all good news as far as I'm concerned. There are written statements for each of those standards. I'm not going to go through those right now. The superintendent has them. The members of the committee, who are seeing the composite for the first time tonight, have those as well. What I will do is read the composite summary right now in its entirety. And then I will open it up to members of the committee to add any comments they'd like to add, or if they feel that something should be added into the composite, we can do it at that time as well. So for the composite summary and the overall rating of the superintendent was proficient overall, goes as follows. "The superintendent had a solid second year leading our district. MCAS scores for FY23 showed significant improvements in several areas. And Wareham Elementary School was designated as a school of recognition. With the assistance of the town, significant infrastructure improvements have been made. A shrinking budget, higher fixed costs, a high percentage of high-need students, and a shrinking student population are all significant issues. The superintendent remains upbeat and continues to have high expectations. We appreciate that he has been transparent about the district's strengths and weaknesses, and we expect him to continue to address areas of concern. Two specific areas of concern, attendance and post-COVID behaviors, are not unique to Wareham. It appears that the superintendent is on track to achieve his 93% attendance goal, although the final percentage is not yet known. We also do not have the final discipline data at this time. Clearer measures of success of our school improvement plan goals around school climate and behaviors would be beneficial. We would encourage Dr. Dandrea to pursue the reopening of the annex as a way to assist struggling students and to improve school climate and public perception. The superintendent and his team have done a very good job managing the budget and dealing with the end of ESSER funds. He has worked closely with his director of finance, the assistant superintendent, the budget subcommittee, our committee, town boards, and the town administrator to create, explain, and justify the FY24 budget. We recognize that the superintendent has made progress in trying to engage with the community. He has sought out staff opinions regarding the IB program, as well as asking special educators to weigh in regarding time they spend in meetings versus time they spend in front of their students. He has reached out to school choice families in an effort to gain insights into their perceptions of the Wareham Public Schools. He has enlisted a public relations group to assist with our messaging. We believe we can still make gains in this area and would advise the superintendent to explore different communication platforms and school showcase events. We all believe it is a priority to have Wareham students remain in Wareham as we offer a quality product. This will require continued student achievement improvement, an improved perception regarding student behaviors, continued transparency, and improved communication. We believe Dr. Dandrea and his team are up to this task." So at this time, I would open it up to any committee members who would either like to discuss maybe parts of their individual evaluation or add any comments. Joyce?
So I'm going to start with my ending sentence on my summary, summary statement. And that's where I said I wanted to recognize Dr. Dandrea's unwavering dedication to Wareham Public Schools. Everything he does is with the success of Wareham students in mind. This year, I've had the opportunity to serve on the budget subcommittee, advisory committee, and on the negotiating team of late. And those experiences really, you know, I've gotten to see how, how dedicated, how hardworking the budget process this year was not easy. And he worked very hard through that with Kristin and, you know, with a lot of other people. But as a superintendent, it comes back to him, and he did, he did a great job, not only with us, but. but, you know, with preserving the relationship that we have with the town and working hard with them. And that isn't always easy, and I just wanted to, to point that out. Again, it's just everything he does is with Wareham students in mind, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
April?
I also just wanted to read a couple passages from my summary. And that was, there's two, just the last two statements, I guess, that another, one of the, the post-COVID goals, I know attendance had been an issue, not only in our district, but as an overall rating of 93. Point 1.7, I believe, was information that he did send out to us afterwards, which was above his goal overall of the 93%. And as stated previously about, you know, if kids can't learn if they're absent. And I also believe that this ties into the communication piece, and I think that working with the administration to identify and address individual student concerns and working with the school resource officer, and hopefully the PR group to communicate with families about the importance of some of these things will be important. And I also just want to point that the, my main concern will be continuing, will be managing to continue improvements made with the unfortunate budget constraints we will be facing for the next fiscal year. I do appreciate Matt's attention to detail and the delegation to the Director of Finance to closely monitor what is in our district's control. And I will be looking to see how the current negotiations will impact the final numbers and the creativity that will be needed to continue the positive growth that we have seen.
Thank you. Jeff?
I've done a lot of these. And I suppose the good news is that I found in doing this evaluation, maybe the first time that I didn't feel, that I found it difficult to isolate specific problems to this specific individual. In other words, I see a, some inherent problems in the, in education, public education in general, but I, but I don't think they're unique to Dr. DeAndrea. So, believe it or not, take that as a compliment. I'm not asking, I'm not asking you to specifically change anything. I'm just asking you to solve public education in general. But I do want to read the comments that I had related to Section 1, which for those of you who are not following along at home, contains some rather key areas: curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluation, that is to say, evaluation of staff, data-informed decision-making, and student learning. To say those are key elements to, to the education of our children is an understatement, of course. My overriding concern in this area, or I should say these areas, it's called instructional leadership, in this area is the degree to which there is accountability for the quality of the instruction, as evidenced by the performance of our students on both formative and summative assessments. I want to emphasize "as evidenced by the performance of our students." It's one thing for an evaluator to observe. It's quite another for those observations to be confirmed by the actual evaluations, by the actual assessments that we do of our students. And sometimes, obviously, there can be a difference between the evaluation of the evaluator and the assessments that are done. Give it great curricula based on rigorous scientific analysis of what works is just a start and must be followed by effective execution by educators. Teacher associations are concerned about tying evaluations to actual evidence of student learning. And there are a multitude of reasons why a student might not learn, even with the appearance of effective instruction. It's also true that differentiated instruction is far easier to say than do, especially depending on the number of students in the classroom and the needs of these children. Nevertheless, some decree of accountability for learning must exist, and tools to increase that degree must be given to teachers to allow them to succeed.
I would just add from my individual evaluation, also, I just want to thank Dr. DeAndrea for getting back to me in such a timely manner when I was bugging him for both questions about his evidence. He backed up everything, and I appreciate that. And again, I want to reiterate, it's easy to celebrate strengths in a district. It's harder to confront weaknesses, and I want to commend you for having, I think, the courage and for being transparent, for saying when there are areas that we need to work on, areas concerned, you don't hide them. You say, "These are, these are they, and we are going to try to fix them." So thank you for that. Brennan?
I just want to add in my comments, the biggest thing that I was concerned with when I was doing the review, I think that you're doing a great job in pretty much all areas. But the one area that I'd like to see more activity in and more is not just retaining students, but bringing students back. You know, I'm still kind of new to this committee. It's my first time looking at budgets and stuff like that. And it appears to me that one of the biggest costs that we can do something about is out-of-town tuitions, out-of-town transportations. Anytime that we send a student away from Wareham, anytime a student doesn't attend Wareham schools, it costs us way more than it should. So the question isn't just how do we make sure more people don't leave, but I'd like to see some kind of action on bringing students back. Because again, I know that you, I think you've done an excellent job in talking to those families that use school choice and finding out why they left. But it's one thing to find out why they left. It's another thing to address those concerns, call them back and say, "Hey, we fixed that. Do you, do you want maybe to give us another chance?" And I understand that, that's, you know, some people are just going to say, "Nope, sorry, you know, we are never getting back together," you know, something like that. But we have to, I think, make that effort. And I'd like to see a little bit more motion on that. That's, that's the only recommendation I have going forward. So I think you're doing a great job.
So that is the composite report. Unless any committee member feels strongly that I've left something out that you would like to have added, I will entertain a motion to accept the final evaluation. So moved.
Second?
I just want to say thank you to the Chair for that's.
No problem.
The work that's needed to put that together.
So we have a motion on the floor in a second?
Is, is it appropriate for Dr. DeAndrea to make any comments?
It is. I don't know if you want to wait till after the vote or before the vote.
Yeah, I, whenever. I don't think it's going to affect the vote.
Yeah, I was planning on having him speak after the vote, but, so, do we have a, we have a motion on the floor in a second? So all in favor of what in, of agreeing with the composite evaluation? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Dr. DeAndrea, the floor is yours.
All right, I just wanted to say thank you for your input. I do, I, I read everything you guys write in those. And I know that, I can tell, you put a lot of thought behind it, and I appreciate it. And it's good feedback for me, so thank you. We have, we really do have a great team here. I, I honestly believe, I've been a principal for nine years, and a superintendent's only as good as his admin team and building principals. And we have an unbelievably great team that is tremendously supportive of our families and our kids. And so, thank you, and we'll keep plugging away.
Thank you. I would make a suggestion or ask the committee to consider going forward, and we were not going to vote on this or even discuss it tonight, and this maybe could go to the Evaluation Subcommittee, about considering maybe putting Dr. DeAndrea on a two-year evaluation cycle, which you can do for experienced superintendents. Many teachers earn a two-year plan, so April of next year would be the formative. The following April would be the summative. So something to consider that we can discuss at a future date prior to the summer. And again, maybe that's something the Evaluation Subcommittee can look at and bring recommendations back to the, the committee regarding that. All right, so we have any other business? April?
I just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow night is Candidates Night, and Jeff and I will be in attendance, as the public is well aware. We are both rerunning to hold our seats on this committee. We both feel very strongly about the education in Wareham Public Schools, and we have both worked closely with several students at different levels. And I think if anyone has any questions or wants to, you know, come ask them of us, we will be in the superintendent's room tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock. So I hope everyone pays attention at least, even if they don't. I mean, the Select Board Room. Superintendent's on the brain, since we just evaluated him, so, yes.
Room 320.
Yes, so that was, that's all I have.
Thank you. So we have a brief executive session. So can I have a motion to enter into an executive session without returning, reconvening, an open session?
Sounds good to me.
So moved.
Second. Right, so we have to do a roll call, I guess. Joyce?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and April?
Yes.
Five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.